Good evening and welcome to the October 11th, 2016 school committee meeting. We're happy to have you all join us. This evening's meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, you should let Kathy Lynch know at 413-203-1360. And we'd like to thank Tim Riley for taping tonight's meeting for us. Superintendent Volansby, do you have some announcements for us?
Yes, I do. The next regular school committee meetings are October 25th, November 8th, and December 13th. The East Hampton High School Drama Club will hold this year's musical, The Wizard of Oz, November 17th through 20th. The Yappy Valley Community Dog Show will be October 15th. The Monster Mash Community Halloween Party will be October 28th from 6 to 9 o'clock at East Hampton High School. Everyone in the community is invited to that, by the way. The East Hampton High School World Language Club will hold a craft fair fundraiser on October 29th from 9 o'clock in the morning until 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And that will be, I believe that's at the high school as well. The Strengthening Families Program at White Brook Middle School began a seven-week program on October 6th. East Hampton High School Homecoming is October 21st.
Yeah, that's right. That is definitely the high school.
I thought so. Thank you.
Also, just hope you maybe know that at the Yappy Valley Dog Show, they'll be holding auditions for Toto for the East Hampton High School musical, The Wizard of Oz. So if you have a potential Toto, be sure to go to the dog show.
Can I enter my cat?
No, no.
She'd be a terrible Toto.
Yeah, never mind.
She'd not sit in a basket.
And if you look at the last superintendent update I did, there's some information on the kind of Toto they're looking for. Calm, gentle.
Definitely not my cat.
Okay, moving on. Marissa, do we have gifts for this evening?
We do, and we do not have any correspondence, just to register that.
Okay.
But we do have gifts. We'd like to please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation from East Hampton Media, a donation of $352.50 to the EHS Music Department for funding the upcoming 2017 musical production from a collaboration between the school and East Hampton Media and the sale of DVDs at the 2016 Greece performances. Thank you very much, East Hampton Media.
Before we vote to accept that, I just want to add an additional note. The gift is actually, I think, even greater than that because, number one, they filmed the production and made the DVDs available for the community. But also, the Drama Club or Parent Council was able to keep 50% of the revenues as well. So they gave us 50% of the revenue and then are giving their half back to the organization as well. So it's a very generous gift on their part.
So I'll make a motion to accept the East Hampton Media donation of $352.50.
Second?
There's a motion to accept this gift.
Sorry, a little fast.
It's been seconded, all those in favor. Motion passes.
I understand.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is the public speak portion of our meeting. If anyone here would like to speak to the committee, you're welcome to do so at this time. We ask you to come forward and state your name and where you're from. And it doesn't look as though anyone's here to do that.
I'm shaking my head no at somebody who's on the agenda. She's asking me if this is the time for her to come up.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it doesn't look as though we have anyone here for the public speak portion of our meeting, so we will move on to a presentation from Superintendent Volansby.
Yes, I am very excited about this presentation. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has designed an award for academic excellence to be given to a high school senior. The award goes to a student who has shown distinction in the pursuit of excellence during his or her school career. A student's three-year cumulative GPA, class rank, and school and community participation, service, leadership, and citizenship is considered in determining who is to receive this award. The student I have chosen for this year's award has a GPA of 4.2 and is ranked number one in her class of 105 students.
Wow.
A few of her long list of volunteer experiences in school and community include the following: Easter Seals Splash of Color Run, Special Olympics, and National Honor Society. Her extracurricular activities include Schools Match Wits, Peer Leaders, Religious Education, Students Against Destructive Decisions, East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition, and playing on the varsity soccer team since her freshman year. I am very pleased this evening to present the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Certificate of Academic Excellence to Hannah Fiskovy. And Hannah, would you please come forward?
Congratulations.
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 Nice job.
Congratulations, Hannah.
And I see that Hannah has, it looks like, two very proud family members in the audience here with her this evening. So congratulations to you as well for having Hannah and all the wonderful things that she's done.
Thank you.
And we also want to let you know that you do not need to stay for the rest of the school committee meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hannah.
That's a big honor.
Yeah.
And the Association, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, has recommended now, we used to give this award later in the year, but they oftentimes at graduation, they've recommended that we do it earlier, and so the award winners can use this on their applications for college.
Oh, good idea.
And then we recognize Hannah again at graduation.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, moving on, we have another presentation by Superintendent Volansby.
Well, actually, I'm going to introduce it.
Introduce, Marissa.
I don't think I do a very good job of presenting on this one. It's an ESPT presentation. ESPT stands for, and it's going to be given by our District RN, our nurse leader, Christina Harrison. And Christina, you can come up while I'm attempting to introduce this. I think I have this correct. ESPT stands for Screenings, Brief Interventions, and Referral to Treatment. And Christina has been the lead person in getting this in place in our district. This is, the screenings are a requirement of the state, and later, as we do the second reading of our Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs, you'll note that there's some language in there about training, about screenings. So we started this work last year with the help of the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition. And so we feel like we're kind of ahead of the curve. It has been in place in Northampton for a few years now, I believe, and the Northampton people have been very helpful in getting us up and running with this. So Christina's going to tell you more about ESPT.
Okay, thank you. Again, my name's Christina Harrison. I'm the district nurse for East Hampton Public Schools. As Nancy was saying, ESPT stands for Screening, Brief Intervention, and Referral for Treatment. Massachusetts has now mandated that we do this substance abuse screening for an identified number of students. This year, we're going to start off with ninth grade only, and next year, we're going to expand that to eighth and ninth grade. This information has been that about 14 to 15 years old is the age group that's most susceptible to substance abuse, peer pressure. That seems to be the time of their lives where these are the things that start coming up for them. The biggest misconception about ESPT is that it's a drug test. It is not a drug test. It is a screening. It is an interview. It's a series of questions. There's a few handouts that are coming along with you guys there. One of them is called the CRAFT. It's stands for, it's just an acronym for the CAR, Relax Alone Forget Family and Friends and Trouble. It's just a brief questionnaire that we're going to go through with the students during their normal screening. So whether or not they have hearing and vision, or they're going to get heights and weights done, this will be done along with the normal screening. So it won't be a separate screening. We won't be calling kids down just to start questioning them about substance abuse and peer pressure. So it's very, it's very brief. As you can see, we're just going to, it's really just a conversation. The students can either fill this out as they're waiting and hand it to the nurse, or if they don't feel comfortable filling it out, the nurse can just discuss the questions with them while they're there in her office. Once the questions are done, whether they filled this out or not, we will hand the screening back to the student. It is 100% confidential. We don't take notes. We don't write anything down. And unless we feel that someone is at immediate risk, we won't even speak to their parents about what the answers that they've given us. The reason it's called referral for treatment is if we do identify a student that may need referral for treatment, the first step will always be to notify either the Guidance Department or Mr. Sampson, who's our Adjustment Counselor there at the high school. And this is work that they do on a daily basis anyway. So this isn't something that they're not going to be prepared for or educated for. They know exactly what referrals need to be done for students. So we're just going to let them know that we spoke to a student, and we feel like maybe they should have an additional conversation, and then the decision will be made at that point whether or not they, you know, need any more treatment or counseling. So the questions that we go through, if they say no just to those first few questions, "Do you drink any alcohol? Have you smoked marijuana? Or use anything else to get high?" If they say no to those questions, the screening is over. They can go on with their day, and nothing else is done. The only other question we'll ask them is, "Have you ever ridden in a car driven by someone, including yourself, that was high or using alcohol or drugs?" Through Northampton, their district nurse over there, Karen Jarvis Vance, she let us know that the yeses that you get on that question are normally, students will tell you, it's their parents. When they say, "Yeah, I've been in the car. My dad had a couple beers at dinner. My mom had a glass of wine at a friend's house." So that's where we start, we're able to have a conversation right at that moment with a student to let them know that you can tell your parent, "I'm not getting in the car with you. You've been drinking. Can we call a cab? Can we call someone to come get us?" This is the time to start teaching them that they are their best advocate. They are the ones that have the voice to let people know that they're not going to make these choices, and hopefully those choices will continue on. The reason we start so young at the eighth and ninth grade is sort of to catch them early and then establish that rapport with the nurse or the Guidance Department so that if they do, maybe their answers are no today, maybe the next year when they're in 10th grade, something does come up, and they remember this conversation they had with the nurse. And they're able to either come to the nurse or the Guidance Department or the Adjustment Counselor and say, "You know, last year, we talked about this, and I didn't have any issues with it, but this year I do, and I'd love to talk to someone about it." So if we can just get that one student who can remember this conversation, or we can identify that might need help, that's really, that's really all we can hope for. And again, through Northampton, they said that their referrals, and Northampton's a larger school than we are, their referrals are one, two, maybe, a year. So we're not looking that we're going to have dozens of kids every year that we're referring for treatment. It'll be usually just conversations in the nurse's office or with the Guidance Department about just making healthier decisions and advocating for themselves. The handouts I handed out are the letter and the information, the CRAFT screening tool. Those were sent home to parents, I believe, last week. So again, part of me trying to present this to you guys is if you get any parent phone calls, emails, if you get stopped in the grocery store, and a parent is saying, "Why are you drug testing my child in school?", you'll be able to let them know. It is just an interview. It's questions, and we're just trying to speak to kids about substance abuse and peer pressure and just hopefully educating them and giving them a stronger voice. Does anyone have any questions?
You might have already mentioned this. Where would you make the referrals to?
Usually, the referral would just be to the Guidance Department or the Adjustment Counselor, and then they, since they do this all the time, then they would be able to identify what the next phone call would be, whether it just be to a parent or whether it was someone who, you know, maybe really is in trouble and someone who need, you know, maybe even needs treatment right away.
Right, right. Okay, cool.
And you said that you give this information back to the student?
Yes, we hand the screening tool back to the student.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not put in their chart. We don't take notes. This is to let them know that the conversation they're having with us is confidential. We do let them know, if you say anything that we feel that you are truly at risk, your health is at risk, or someone in your family is at risk. Because some kids may find this opportunity to say, you know, "My mother drives me to school every morning drunk," or "She takes a lot of pills, and I don't know what they are." So this is an opportunity for kids to reach out. So we want them to know that it is confidential, but if we feel that they or anyone in their family is at risk for danger, you know, true health issues, that we will, you know, go take the next step and make sure that everyone is safe. But like I said, you know, that's one or two out of, you know, our ninth grade is about 120 kids, so if we have one, that'll be a large percentage average from what the area towns that have been piloting this program have found.
And you said these went out last week?
Yes, these letters, the CRAFT tool, and the, I forget what it was called, the little family communication skills. Those three things went together in a packet last week home with all the ninth graders.
I'm interested to see if you get any back, that choose not to have their child participate.
It's quite possible. And even if a parent says, "Yes, screen my child," and a student comes down and says, "I'm not talking to you," it's completely voluntary. And maybe they say no today, but again, maybe the following year or the following month, they'll know, you know, that one time the nurse wanted to talk to me about this, and I wasn't ready, but I'm ready now. So you just, you just hope that you plant the seed, that they might ask for help at some point.
Christina, you may have said this, and I missed it, but I understand that you're going to phase this in.
Yes.
By grades. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Well, we're just going to be doing ninth grade this year, so letters went out. So those screenings will be starting in the next few weeks. And then next year, we're going to do eighth and ninth grade. That'll be the extent of it. We'll do eighth and ninth grade every year after that. So within about three to four years, you know, those kids that are in 10th, 11th, 12th grade will have been screened twice. And, you know, that, we don't go any younger. Right now, Massachusetts doesn't require us to go any younger than eighth or ninth grade. We could have done seventh and ninth, but we're kind of following Northampton's pilot program, and they did eighth and ninth, and they had really good results with it. So we're just going to sort of take their pilot program and enroll with what they, what they had done.
Thank you.
Sure.
I like the idea of eighth and ninth grade. I think that's a great age to approach. My question is, is there, what's the reason for not doing, say, sophomores?
Because the studies have shown that that 14 to 15 year is when they are most susceptible to the experimentation and the peer pressure. It's, I mean, it can be done at any age, obviously. I mean, there are 10-year-olds that are feeling the peer pressure, and there are 12th graders that have, you know, still never tried anything. But studies have shown that that 14 to 15-year-old is, if we catch them then, if we can, if we can give them the education then and show them the resources that are out there, that that's where the most success has been.
Okay. I have a question.
Sure.
One more. If a person, if a child does tell you that their parent has been driving while intoxicated with them in the car, do you have to file a 51A with DCF?
We are mandated reporters.
Yeah, I was trying to think if it, like, if you would have to report on that or not.
That's why we, we will say to the student before the screening begins, you know, "I'm going to ask you these series of questions. If you say anything that I feel that you or your family members are at danger, I will have to, you know, report it to someone." So we do let them know that, you know, and that's definitely one of the situations where we are, as nurses, we're mandated reporters. Yeah, yeah. So we have to file that a student is in danger. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. You did a really good job explaining all that. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our subcommittee reports. Turn it over to Cynthia for the finance subcommittee.
I'll be really short. We met last week, and Dale presented a proposal for a number of transfers. We looked at the transfers, we reviewed all the information, and then voted as a subcommittee to bring them here tonight. And so I'd like to turn it over to Dale to take us through some of those transfers so that everybody else has the same information.
So you all should have in your packet a double-sided sheet that details the transfers. And the thing that I want to emphasize starting is, I consider all of these transfers to fall into the general category of budget housekeeping. You'll probably remember that last year, I came to the committee about this time of year with a number of transfers. And what it does is move money within the budget to accommodate for changes that have taken place since we constructed the budget late last winter. All kinds of things have happened around staffing and enrollment shifts. And in addition to that, at the time we put the budget together, there are a number of question marks relative to funding sources, primarily grant funding under various grant programs. We didn't know how much we were going to receive until those grant applications were made available to us in July. So this is not looking for additional money outside of the budget, either from reserves or looking for, to increase the budget. It's just moving money within the budget. And as Cindy mentioned, at the meeting last week, we went line by line by line and gave detailed explanations for each of them. I'm not going to do that tonight. I'm going to give you a couple of examples. One example is that children who have identified special needs, have IEPs, become eligible for services within the public school when they turn three years old. And we don't know how many of those kinds of children they're going to be until they come close to turning three years old. And this year, there just happens to be a bumper crop that will become eligible for services between now and December that have us needing to add a pre-kindergarten classroom to accommodate those children. So that means an additional teacher, an additional paraprofessional. So that's an example of a change that results in needing to move money from somewhere. And if you look at where the money is coming from for these, I'll highlight one of the big reasons of, where's this money coming from? Well, how are you able to transfer it? And you'll see a good number of them draw money that was budgeted for vocational transport, vocational education. We actually have a good number of East Hampton students who are going, pursuing vocational education this year as compared to last year. We budgeted for there to be about the same number as there were last year, and there's a significant number less. So that money is able to be repurposed to cover some of those unexpected additional expenses that we encountered as we've started the school year. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions that people have, but that's sort of the overview.
Well, I'm really happy to see this, Dale, and I know you started this last year. And aligning the funding with the needs is perfect, and I think it gives you a better view for the year, for the upcoming year, and then also to budget for the, for the next fiscal year. So I am thrilled. I know you started this last year, and I think this is an excellent process, and it really pinpoints where your needs are, but it puts them where they are. And then if you're lucky enough to have an area to pull from, you know, you can keep track of it that way. So I think it's, like you're calling it housekeeping, but I think it's just really good financing, and I thank you for it.
I absolutely agree with you. I help, I think it helps us manage the budget well this year, and I hope, I think it helps us plan for the budget for next year.
Absolutely.
At the same time, by, by keeping a really close eye on.
I agree.
Superintendent Volansby, what's your sense of why that number has changed from what you expected in terms of enrollment in vocational education programs?
One, one thing that's happened was the law changed so that students who belong to a district or a district where you have an affiliation with a vocational school must go to that vocational school for their exploratory. All vocational students are given the opportunity, must be given the opportunity for an exploratory. So in the past, we had to send any of our students who chose a program that was not at CTEC to Smith for their exploratory. And then if they did not choose that program, we'd bring them back. So this year, only students who were going to pursue a program in agriculture and natural sciences were able to take their exploratory at Smith Vocational. So we had fewer students going to Smith Vocational. We don't know what will happen in January. Some more may go back or go to Smith Vocational at that point in time. And our numbers at CTEC also were down. So, you know, I'd like to think that we're offering more opportunities for our students here in our district, but, you know, and we do try to do that, to provide those programs that our students, you know, will, will feel that they can engage in here in our district. But I think it's probably those two, two reasons, two factors.
Just as a comment rather than as a question, it would be great if we could document the increased enrollment in classes within our own program so that we can be aware of the opportunity to, you know, continue to exploit an advantage that we have, because certainly it is economically more efficient for us to keep those students happily here. And if our program is aligned for that to happen, recognizing that and being conscious of it would be helpful.
And I think this year in particular, because now we have a program in our fabrication labs, it would be good to document how many of our students, you know, are here and stay with us for those programs. As I say, we're attempting to, you know, provide that, that experience for our students.
Do you mind mentioning to what the current tuition rate is for Smith Vocational?
I think.
This year's, it's $17,000 per pupil, and then if the student has an IEP, it's an additional $4,600.
Per student?
Per student.
Per Smith Voc.
Correct.
Just, just mentioning that.
And for CTEC, do you have that, I think it's around 10?
It's between 10 and 11. I don't have the exact number in my head.
Significant.
10 and 11,000.
Right.
Yeah.
But the differential is the key, right?
And we like sending our students to CTEC because that way, they still stay in our high school for part of their day, and they get to participate in sports with our students and be able to experience our high school, our new state-of-the-art high school. So it is a model that we like. We recognize that it isn't the right model for every student, and some students, particularly those who are interested in going into agriculture or natural sciences, you know, Smith is definitely the right place for them, as well as a couple of other programs.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer request.
Second?
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the policy subcommittee.
We have a second reading of the Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Trying to think of the language. Policy change, I-H-A-M-B, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs.
Second?
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. So do you have anything else for us?
No, we're going to be meeting sometime before the next meeting, hopefully.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Cynthia, do you have a collaborative for Educational Services update for us?
This time I do. We met last week, and we did a number of things. We reviewed and approved the Executive Director's Goals for 2016-17. We reviewed the various conferences and workshops that the collaborative is hosting and putting on. One of the things I'd like to just mention, I thought, this was the first year they're going to do this, but on October 15th, there's a conference at HCC for Transforming Education for Social Justice. And I cannot make it this Saturday. I'm doing homecoming at my school, but that would have been something that I would really have enjoyed. And other people, there's still, as of last week, there was still room, so if people were interested, they could do that. The other thing we discussed. The other thing we discussed is the progress on, the collaborative started an initiative called Proud of Western Mass Public Schools Initiative. And so we talked about the progress that they've made in that area. There's a Facebook page and a Twitter page. And it's really just to start to have schools be a little more vocal and publicly out there concerning all the great things that we do. There's so much negative about public schools. Sometimes we tend to be a little too humble with our great triumphs and successes. And so this is an idea that is taking off to give schools a chance to shine and just let everybody know some of the great things that they're doing. So that's pretty exciting.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay. Our student representative isn't with us this evening, so we'll be skipping over the student activities update. But we'll move on to our superintendent's report. And Superintendent Folesby, you're going to talk to us about our strategic plan.
Pardon me.
Oh, Peter, I'm sorry.
I just, for purposes of discussion, I would like to propose that at some point we take up the question of our meeting time. I would propose that we move our meeting time to 7:00 PM to facilitate the meeting of subcommittees. I don't know whether we can take immediate action on that. I suspect that we can, because I think that, but, you know, either way, I think that it would be, it would be potentially helpful to at least explore when we meet.
I do apologize. I did mean to bring that up during the other category. I apologize.
That's great.
Do we have any discussion on that suggestion?
Yes. I was just wondering, you know, reading the emails and going back and forth, the purpose of starting the meetings later would be so that you could do your subcommittee meetings earlier? How about, how about the opposite way around? Start the meetings earlier and then do your subcommittee meetings later, so that way you wouldn't have that time constriction of, you know, you're in the middle of a discussion, going over whether a policy, finance, some of them I know can be lengthy, where, you know, your agenda, you, you know what your agenda is on your school committee. So I'm not in favor of seven o'clock. I think, I'm actually in favor of six o'clock. I'd be in favor of moving them up. And I think also for viewers and people that watch, the, you know, six o'clock is kind of a more standard meeting, and people that come to do presentations, most of us don't go home. We're still here from seven this morning. So I didn't know if that would work with, and I can understand trying to get one night for both your meetings, but if you could do them the other way around, instead of trying to get, you know, if, if you're in the middle of a long, a lengthy policy discussion, and these meetings are public meetings, they have to start right on time.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
So just wondering if you might want to entertain that idea.
I tend to agree with you. I think that it is putting us in a real time constraint to try to have meetings, full-length meetings. And sometimes I think they do need to be on an issue, knowing that we've got a deadline coming up really quickly. I like the idea of a six o'clock start. I don't know if that helps. It might not. Just because I, I agree, then you could, it would still be a decent hour for the subcommittees to meet afterward.
And I know you do a lot of your hashing out of a lot of the, you know, the complicated parts in subcommittees. So I'm just thinking that might end up being a lengthier of the two, where you might want that one not to have your time constraints, to stop and then start your meeting.
Yep. Any other discussion? Is everyone able to make a six o'clock time, start time?
No.
You're not?
So that does not help you?
Okay. Okay.
But I think if that, if the, if it works for the majority of the school committee and the merits of the mayor has pointed out, we did experiment, we, we had a seven o'clock meeting time for a number of years. We've had the six-thirty meeting time for a number of years. If there's, if there's, you know, nearly unanimous consent to move it, I think that's fine. I think having, having enough people here to meet at six will, will be possible.
I have one last question, kind of around that issue. Is there a real need to have both meetings on the same night? I'm not sure what the thinking is, but I know that finances met on different, a different night that we've coordinated. And I'm just wondering, is there a pressing need to have both meetings?
I mean, for me personally, it's easier to do them both in the same night, just because I've got other stuff going on another nights during the week sometimes. So if I've got like one night where I've got two meetings, it's easier than to have two nights with two meetings. But, but I'm not the only one, so, you know.
Well, could we have the meeting start at six-thirty as it currently does and have the subcommittee meetings after?
Yeah. That's fine.
Is that possible?
You can see.
Wait on that going that direction?
Sure.
Okay. Because I think it's important to have a time that we can all attend. That's really important.
I do too.
I, I, I think I'll just note, and again, I, I understand what the mayor has suggested. I do recall that historically, one of the advantages of the, of the earlier meeting time was then the ability to report out the results of subcommittee meetings instantly rather than.
Like waiting two weeks.
Two weeks later. And I, and I know that there were occasions, as, as has been pointed out, when we worked right up to the, to the limit. Sometimes having a, a known end to the discussion time promotes a certain efficiency of conversation versus an open-ended piece. I, I know, for example, in our current meeting evenings of Tuesday, I begin work at 7:30 in the evenings. So if we moved to having policy subcommittee conversations after that, I won't, I won't be able to attend. But I, I think there's an alternative solution to that. If the sense of the, of the committee is that that's a better system, there's clearly a better way to go than to swing it all the way around to accommodate one person.
So you're saying that you wouldn't be able to attend a, a policy subcommittee after the school committee meeting?
Not without changing my, unfortunately, the nature of my job is that I work two to four nights a week, starting, you know, at or after dinnertime. So, yeah, as I say, I think there's a clear and almost irresistible implication to this about how we can resolve it. So that was already in my mind. So I think we should proceed with that idea. It will stick with six-thirty, and we'll see what happens.
All right. We'll just do the best we can, stick with our traditional meeting time.
Sure.
We'll do the best we can with subcommittee meetings to make it work for everyone.
Well, Peter, what were you thinking? You were thinking of, when were you think, if you wanted to do the subcommittee meeting before, what time were you thinking before?
I was, I was hoping that.
Like the six-thirty?
Either, you know, somewhere between, you know.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. If it was six to seven.
I think if we, if we could start meetings, and I don't know how often they would meet in conjunction with school committee meetings, by six-fifteen, even six, even a half an hour, if, if we're meeting on a consistent basis, you know, twice a month, for a half an hour, you, you can carry forward the conversation. I, yeah, I, I think we've got the sense of the group, and I think that's our duty, is to let the public know that we've explored the possibility, and, and I think that there are more disadvantages than advantages to the proposal. So I, I think that's all the discussion that it needs.
Okay. So what I think I'm understanding for where we're at is that we will keep our meeting time at six-thirty PM, our regular meeting time, and that the subcommittees can determine what's going to work best for them on an ongoing basis. Okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much for that discussion. Okay, well, moving on now to the superintendent's report. And Superintendent Folesby has an update for us on our strategic plan.
Yes, I do. So we are in year three of this strategic plan. This will be the third year, third and last year of this plan. And in the spring, we will be working on a new three-year plan. So we've added updates in the plan also to year one and year two. So in year one, we had completed a number of our initiatives, but we continue to add things. So I wanted to add those in, and I'm going to talk about those as well tonight. Our strategic plan has three strategic objectives. One is equity and excellence, one is community of learners, and one is data-driven. The plan is available on our website for those of you who are tuning in tonight. If you want to try to pull it up, you can follow along, and it's also in the school committee packet. So we'll start with equity and excellence. In year one, as you can see from the plan that's in your packet, the first initiative was to clearly define and articulate current intervention strategies and programs. And the note is to see the attachment, because I, rather than trying to put all of that into the plan, I have attached a, a document that outlines the interventions that are in place at our high school, middle school, and elementary school levels. Are there any questions on that one? I'll continue on, and we can always go back to any questions you might have as well. The second initiative is to integrate digital literacy into all curriculum areas. And we can see here some examples of the technology that's been implemented to, in order to integrate it into instruction. One example is increased access for adaptive technology for students who need this kind of support. An example would be iPads with adaptive software and for our students who need this assistive technology. The plan that's mentioned here is a tiered system of support delivered by consultants who come into our district and teachers. Another example of this initiative is bringing keyboarding instruction into the elementary schools to develop keyboarding skills. Number three is to develop vertically-aligned protocols and processes for building support team, 504 and district curriculum accommodation plans. Our plans hadn't been updated in a number of years, and so our new director of special education is working on updating them. She's finished the 504 plan, and it's also, it's been revised, and it's in the staff handbook, which is again available on our, our district website. Number four is to build a, and she's continuing to work on the, the D cap and the B S T handbooks this year, and we'll complete them at the end of the year. Number four is to build a continuum of pre-K to 12 curriculum and instruction aligned with the current Massachusetts frameworks. And this is posted on our website, so you can see that, at that, on the website. And this outlines the, the articulation that we have, we have to date. Number five is implement newly, develop scope and sequences for English Language Arts and Math, and this is in process. As the standards continue to change and our, and some of our instructional models, we continue to update our scope and sequence. Any questions on year one? So the year two initiatives were to integrate, number six, integrate Massachusetts Curriculum Framework, College and Career Anchor Standards, and Standards for Mathematical Practices throughout all subjects. It's in place for ELA and Math. And we're beginning to support teachers in integrating these standards across the curriculum in all content areas to develop those, those understandings. Number seven, provide all students opportunities to engage in complex tasks across the curriculum to develop higher-order thinking skills. We have listed samples here of where there's evidence of this initiative. And Principal Burke did ask his high school teachers if they'd be willing to come in and do a presentation on complex assessments aligned with the complex tasks. And they're willing to do that, so we'll look forward to that. They just needed a little more time to get that presentation ready.
Great.
Number eight is ensure student growth by expanding diverse teaching strategies that build on student strengths. And this contains a list of initiatives that are supported with professional development we have put in place to ensure diverse teaching strategies are being used to support success for all learners in our schools. And over the years, we've actually implemented a number of new programs and strategies to address the data that we collect on, on student success. Number nine is use Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. This is the MTSS, is a framework for interventions and supports. This is a tier, the, the MTSS is a three-tier program, and it describes the intensive instruction. So tier one is the core instruction that happens in the classroom. Tier two is supplemental instruction and core instruction. So it would be like Title I Math or English Language Arts supports. And tier three is the core educational program as well as special education supports for our students. And now we are on community of learners. That's our second initiative. And, and year one, and the community of learners initiative, by the way, is to cultivate a respectful learning community that promotes success, relevance, and purpose for all educators, students, parents, and educational partners. So our first initiative in year one was to increase digital literacy throughout the community. Samples of what had been put into place are listed here. If you have any questions on those. Since we've hired our new director of technology, we've been able to implement, you know, many more of these programs and provide more experiences for digital literacy. Number two is to employ effective communication strategies to enhance all school and community partnerships. And again, we've provided samples of the ways we're working to improve communication with our families and our community. I think you're aware of these. Number three is teachers and administrators will collaborate to create goals that align with state standards and district strategic initiatives. And this has been marked as completed. You have evidence of that in our, our goals and our strategic plan. Number four, use meeting time to work collaboratively on achieving targeted goals and products. And we're using professional, the professional learning communities model throughout our district now. We're finding it's very successful. It started at the high school, and we did receive some statewide recognition for the model that we had at our high school, and we have spread that into our other levels as well. And the last one, use the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System as a framework to support district and school improvement. Clearly, you know, we, we feel that we've completed that, that we're in an ongoing process of doing that. In year two, the initiative was to develop a system that facilitates easy access, mutual understanding, and common implementation of current rules, policies, and procedures. This initiative was spearheaded by our director of technology, Ashley Barstow. And he's done a wonderful job in supporting us to purge our outdated printed material, which we had in, in hundreds and hundreds of binders throughout our schools, things from many, many years ago and not particularly useful to us. And we're converting what is, is useful and, and updated into electronic versions, and we're trying to, and we're making this consistent across the district, so there's easy access to it, and we have consistency of the, of the forms and materials that we need. And then our last one is data-driven, which is to collaborate, to analyze, and apply data appropriately to guide meaningful decisions that improve student learning, educator, school, and system performance. And in year one, we had developed a systemic plan for data collection and analysis. I think we've been very successful in implementing data teams in all of our schools and in all of our buildings, and learning walks. We're stronger with the learning walks in some of our schools than others, but we have them in place throughout the district. And we've used the learning walks to collect data and the data teams to analyze that data and make recommendations for how we're going to better meet our student needs. Number two is to assess alignment of resources and allocate all resources to support strategic initiatives. Again, here's some samples of programs and initiatives we identified as needed in order to better meet the needs of our learners and efficiency, efficiencies of operations, and we funded these in our budget. And I, and clearly, as I believe you all have recognized, since our director of business services has come on board, it's been much easier for us to be able to do this, and we're, we're much more closely aligned than we were previously. And in year two, we have informed instruction based on analysis of multiple data sources. And our, we've worked very closely with the DSAC teams, the state, district, school, and assistant centers. They've been very helpful in supporting this initiative of using data to inform instruction. They've helped us with our learning walks. They've helped us with our data teams. And in addition, we've allocated funds to. And in addition, we've allocated funds to improve data collection at White Brook this year, and have used survey information as well to respond to needs identified by our parents. For instance, improved communication facilities and World Language Teacher at White Brook, which are some current examples of how we've used this data to, to improve support for our students. So, that was the quick version. I tried to do that.
Can you just repeat, what, D SAC, again?
District and School Assistant Centers.
Thank you.
And it's, it comes from the state, and they come in and meet with us, and they provide consultants to, to help us implement strategies in our schools.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's very impressive.
That's a lot to reflect on. No other questions or comments, or just want to give you another minute?
It's a lot of material, I understand that, and, and, you know, it's a lot to absorb. It's a lot of work that we have done, but, and, and in many cases, I just provided samples to, to give you a sense of what's been accomplished.
That is impressive. It's very impressive, what's been accomplished.
Very thorough.
Very well outlined plan.
It's been a good guide for us.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, next on our agenda is discussion on a resolution, and that resolution is opposing ballot question four. Which, which seeks to create a commercial marijuana industry and legalize recreational marijuana? And that has been included in your packet for review, for consideration as to whether or not we, as a committee, might want to adopt that resolution.
And I might just preface this by telling you that I received information from other districts about resolutions that they'd passed. Clearly, also, the, the position statement from the Association of School Superintendents. There's a municipal group that's also passed a resolution, and groups of physicians, there's a, there's really a number of different organizations that have passed resolutions, so I'm just putting this forward to you tonight as information for the, for school committee members to discuss. I, I did also notice that we had a couple of members of our East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition, and, you know, they've been doing a lot of work on preventing substance abuse, and they're here, and I'm certain that they'd be glad to answer any questions if you had any.
Any questions or discussion?
Well, I've read over the, the proposal, and I read the school, the Mass Association of School Committee's proposal, and I've been doing some research this afternoon, and I'm, I'm, I would be opposed to us adopting this particular resolution. You know, there's other states that have done this now. We haven't seen the sort of, like, huge issues that were expected. There's been, like, some hiccups. I think they've actually been well addressed by regulation, which is what I think we really need to do in this industry. The fact that marijuana is already decriminalized in Massachusetts just means that it's not illegal to possess a certain amount of it, or you basically get, like, a speeding ticket, essentially. It's still illegal to sell it or grow it, which still means that it's criminalized, and criminal, drug criminalization disproportionately impacts communities of color, minority communities, and has led to mass incarceration in this country, and I just can't stand behind it. So, I would be opposed to us adopting this proposal at this point.
I feel the same way, Sarah. I, you know, I have sympathy to, to the superintendent's statement here about, thinking about the, the health and safety of children and the ways that this resolution might affect them, but similar to Sarah, I worry about it from the standpoint of civil liberties and racial justice. So, I personally wouldn't want to put my name to this resolution.
Well, as, as a teacher and a counselor in the past, I have really very strong concerns about youth, making it more accessible and more attractive for youth to partake in this. And, you know, I've heard a lot of the arguments that say, you know, there's going to be an age, and it's going to be controlled, and the reality is, it really isn't. And as a teacher, I see on a daily basis the impact, what happens to students' learning when they come to school, even if they come to school after being high, they're still, their thought process is extremely impacted on, on a daily basis for a long time afterwards. So, I understand, you know, your feelings, and I just, I have these conversations all the time with people. I think that I would really worry about us passing any legislation that's going to make it easier for, for teenagers and kids to do this. So, I think I'm on the other side of the argument. You know, it's one thing for adults, it's, but this really impacts kids significantly, and I, and I see it constantly. And that, you know, you talked, Sarah, about, you know, there hasn't been an impact. Well, to me, the reality is, there hasn't been enough time to document and register the impact on our youth. So, I think it's a little too early for us to say, you know, that it's not going to have an impact on, on kids.
I think Colorado actually does have quite a bit of documentation about the negative effects so far, in terms of fatalities from car accidents and all kinds of things.
What I was reading was saying that was down, that the car accident fatality was down, let's see if I can find it. Because that was one of the things I was looking up, was fatalities from car accidents, and that was actually down in Colorado, was my understanding, but I can recheck that.
My, my understanding is, it's completely the opposite.
My, you know, what you were also just saying right now, Cynthia, too, is that, like, kids are already getting it, you know, so I don't know what the impact of, like, right now, we have an unregulated underground market that kids can access marijuana with and are accessing marijuana with. And so, I don't understand why having an above-ground regulated marketplace would increase their access to it if they're clearly are, already able to access it as it is, you know? And I think one of the good things that did come out of Colorado was that a lot of the revenue that was raised went towards substance abuse programs and towards the schools as well. So, I think, like, that's something that, you know, those are both two areas that are often impacted by the budget, you know, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question? The, the, I think often, from my perspective, it helps to frame it in terms of the analogy. We currently, in terms of alcohol, have a regulated market. But we also contend with the issues of young people having access to it. And, and in that case, so is that, is that not an accurate parallel?
I think it's perfectly accurate.
So, the creation of the regulated market in terms of alcohol hasn't prevented the problem of young people having access to it in what is still illegal for them? Is that, is that fair to say? In terms of carrying out the, it seems like it's one of the, the nearest analogies to the question with marijuana. I mean, currently, the legalization of medical marijuana makes marijuana something that a physician can prescribe, just as physicians can prescribe any number of pharmaceuticals that aren't available to me, or you, or anyone else, unless we have adult or child, unless we have that. So, how does that, I'm curious, just in terms of the folks who are opposed to this, how does that analogy factor into the analysis here?
The people who are opposed to?
Us, us adopting this.
Okay.
Right? Because wouldn't this, as I understand question four, and I apologize that my understanding is probably not as strong as it should be, is that it would be moving us more in the direction of something like alcohol? Am I mistaken about that? That, that's my reading of it, is that it would allow for legal enterprises. It would be a legal enterprise to sell marijuana and marijuana, products containing marijuana, with the expectation that there would be an age limit to that. Correct? That, am I understanding that? Okay. So, I guess that's my, my question in terms of its impact, is that we seem to struggle with youth access to alcohol, i- i- independent of the fact that we have a legal market for it. So, it almost seems to me as though that's not a, that, that's not a positive. Creating a commercial market for marijuana isn't, on its face, immediately clear to me that that would help us better address the issue of young people having access to it. But maybe there's evidence that that is the case, and I haven't had time to, to access or to understand it.
I, I think what you're talking about, too, is, is time, accessing time, but I really haven't heard too many success stories, honestly, about Colorado. What I heard is different legislators all visiting Colorado, half one-way, half one-way, you know, hadn't really made up their mind, and after kind of visiting and seeing the different problems and hardships that it's causing, they all came back, pretty much, you know, in, which would be in support of a resolution, so pretty much against the legalization.
Yeah, and one, one of the other concerns I have is, this is talking about authorizing marijuana edibles. So, candy bars and...
That's huge. That has been, that has been a huge problem.
Candy bars, gummy bears, cookies. You know, we use, we learned decades ago that we have to stop advertising to kids for smoking if we're ever going to get kids to start making healthy decisions and not smoke. So, we started regulating how that can happen, and now, you know, we're looking at the possibility that we're going to be making marijuana extremely appetizing to, to dabble in. The idea of edibles, candy bars, cookies is very attractive to kids, and I think, you know, that's my big concern. This is very different from adults just being able to, to make their own decisions. This is really significantly going to impact our youth, and it's going to impact, right now, Massachusetts schools rate very high in the nation. I'd like to hold on to kids' education. I'd like to, you know, keep them, and at least stand in front of negative, poor decisions for their health, and, and this just really concerns me.
Well, thank you for bringing it up, because that was what, where I was going, you know, with the Colorado, you know, reference, is that especially the gummy bears, that has been a huge problem. So, you know, when you're talking about regulating, it opens up maybe, again, not enough time to really look through everything, but that has not been a positive in any, in any way, shape, or form for anybody. And, you know, even going back to vitamins that don't look like candy, the whole thing, so, but the childlike products are very attractive and has been a huge issue and a huge controversy.
Just to get back to something that I said before that I want to clarify, I looked it up on Fact Check, and my, from what it says on factcheck.org, is that the, there's mixed data on the driving, driving data since passage. There was a decrease in driving fatalities following decriminalization of marijuana in Colorado, and then, since then, some reports are saying that it's increased, some reports are saying that it's decreased, and it's also made very complicated by the fact that if you smoke marijuana or ingest marijuana, you, your blood will test positive for it, or your hair actually in particular, for like, months after. So, it's hard to tell if somebody's actually intoxicated while they're driving, so that's why it's, there's such murky data on it. But I wanted to, like, throw that in, because you, because you were right, and, like, we were both reading different things, I think.
Right, and my concern, though, is, when I was talking about data, I was really talking about data affecting the education of our youth, and I think that it's a little too early to get enough data to be able to, personally, I think it is highly destructive to their education, but I, you know, I don't think we have enough data right now to say it's not affecting kids in Colorado, it's not, you know, affecting the education.
I am still really disturbed, though, about the fact that we've decriminalized marijuana, so now you're allowed to possess it, but if you're selling it, or if you're caught buying it, then that's against the law, you know? And I feel like that is having an impact on other families as well, you know? Like, if you look at M C I Framingham, which is a federal women's prison in Framingham, which is at 145% capacity right now, three-quarters of the women in that prison are mothers, and 68% of them are there for nonviolent offenses, mostly drug-related. So, a lot of that is selling drugs, like marijuana, and I really feel for those families, too. You know, like, I don't think that you should lose a parent because you're selling a, something that is, like, illegal for people to possess, but not to sell. I find that very hypocritical.
But I don't have the data in front of me, and I don't know if you do either. I, I'm not sure that those numbers are marijuana-related. I think a lot of those numbers are much heavier drug-related.
Well, but it's hard to tell, like, and it's not something that's accounted for very well, but I do know that, like, like, it's, there's an opportunity there in the way that we've structured our laws in this state, where you can go to jail for selling something that's legal to possess, and I just, I have an ethical problem with that.
And is there data in states like Colorado saying that since that law was passed, that the amount of marijuana use went up in students and children?
I don't have those figures now, but yes.
That's the impression I've gotten, but I don't have a...
There's something in this one about, the last bullet, about increase in suspensions and expulsions.
So, the question, then, it seems from what Sarah and Marissa have mentioned, as, as arguments against our endorsement of this resolution, is the, the contradiction in terms between having something be legal to possess in small amounts, but not legal to produce or sell, and the disproportionate impact that it has on minority communities. And is that, I, I'm aware that while that is generally true, I was not aware specifically that it was true in the case of marijuana. I know that that is often said. Is that also?
It is true.
True? That, that, so, that there's a disproportionately higher percentage of people who are incarcerated were people of color because of the sale of marijuana? Okay. I was not aware, that's a, that's a...
I'd like to have us see those, those numbers. But, you know, I think we, we should explore this a little further.
I would really suggest, I've been reading The New Jim Crow by Michelle Alexander, which talks a lot about mass incarceration, the war on drugs, and the impact it's had on communities of color, and she talks a lot about that particular issue, which has been a really helpful book for me to understand this issue.
But again, I think we need to look at both sides of that, you know, not just material that's written, you know, in favor of...
Well, that's, it's not written in favor of, of that. It's written about the effect that mass incarceration has had on black communities and where that's come from. It's about the war on drugs. I mean, it's not like a pro-marijuana book.
Right, but I...
So, would, would a way of addressing the concern that you've raised, let's assume for the moment that it's true, that there's incontrovertible evidence that supports that, is there a way that addresses that separate from the creation of a legal enterprise? Because, again, not having given this perhaps the, the full amount of time that I should, the concern that I have in the parallel with alcohol is that I do know, and with, with cigarettes, is that the, the regulations, which have been relaxed, and with the explosion of social media and a massive number of, of cable television stations, I know it is far more likely for young people to see advertisements for alcohol, not just beer or, or wine, but, but alcohol in the form that has a higher alcohol content, and that, that impact of that advertising, all else equal, seems only to have the effect of encouraging young people to try it. So, in a way, we face the same sort of ethical dilemma that you're pointing out, which is, we say that this is legal for adults, not for children, and then advertise it at a time when children are going to see it, and, so I guess what I'm wondering is, is there an alternative way to address the concern that you've raised, which I think is, is an important concern, that I wouldn't want us to mistakenly exacerbate without going against what seems to be the, obviously, the expressed wish of some fairly thoughtful folks who are in favor of this. I mean, you know, when I think of pediatricians saying that they're concerned about it, that seems to me to be not related to the criminal justice system and the, and the difficulties that we have in criminal justice. I, maybe the American Association of Pediatricians has an interest in that, I doubt it. I doubt it. And so I discount some of the folks who've signed on to this in relation to criminal justice, because I think I'm sympathetic to the concerns that, that each of you has, has mentioned. But I, but I'm trying to figure out the other sponsors of this, who seem to me to be less directly in any way benefiting from or professionally served by the, the resolution, and yet they're also endorsing it. And I don't know how to reconcile those two things. It makes it very hard for me. Because I certainly don't want us to vote for something, I mean, I wanted to bring up tonight that I think we ought to make a comment again about question two, because I know we, we don't meet again for, for two weeks, and then I think we meet on the evening of the election itself. And I, and I feel really pretty well-informed about question two and less torn. I mean, I'm sympathetic to the families that take advantage of, of what the law allows, but I'm, but I'm generally pretty clear in my reason for supporting our resolution on question two. And I'm just not as clear here. So I apologize that I'm probably asking a lot of questions I should have taken more time to research in, in advance. I'm, I guess what I'm saying is that I'm inclined to support this proposal, because I see a lot of folks supporting it who strike me as not having a stake in a criminal justice system that, as you point out, may have some deep flaws.
I think I, I really appreciate the way that you're framing that, and I really like the idea of kind of seeing where we can find some common ground, because I think like all of us are worried about the marketing effects on children. Like, I think, like, I'm not a huge fan of advertising, and I think it's, one thing that's very interesting is that one of the groups that's actually against this passing is the alcohol distributing companies in the state have really rallied big time against it, because they feel like it's going to be competition for them. So, and, you know, it might be. So I think like, that's something that, you know, I would, I mean, I'm, like, I'm in favor of the law passing. I would really, but I would really like to go on record about this concern that we have about the, the marketing to children, you know, because I think that's something that can and should be addressed.
Well, that's, that's kind of my concern, is I think it should be rewritten. If you're going to propose something that is for, you know, responsible adults, then you shouldn't be able to be marketing candy bars and gummy bears and cookies, okay? You shouldn't be able to do that. So the fact that that's a part of this question is what really concerns me so much. It makes it so incredibly attractive.
And actually, that's something that has come up in Colorado, like as recently as last week, I remember reading about this, and I just looked it up to make sure I was right about it. But they're, they are having issues with that, and that is going right back before the legislature again. It's not about regulating it.
So I think the argument for, you know, this resolution would be better if it was written with some very different, more strict guidelines than what's laid out. This is opening the door, I think, for, you know, I mean, we're, my concern is we're a school committee, my concern is I'm a, I'm a teacher, I see the impact of this on a daily basis. And, you know, it makes my blood boil to think that we're going to be marketing attractive candy bars and cookies and gummy bears to kids.
Do we have to adopt the statement as written, or is this something that can be modified?
A resolution is just a sample.
It's a sample.
Right.
Because I feel like, I mean, this is a question that I'm still researching, and I really, I don't quite know what I think about this law at this point. But I agree that it seems like that there are real weaknesses in the way that it's been posed. And yet if I, personally, if I was going to put my name to resolution on the public record, I would really need the petition to, or this, this position statement to acknowledge that the system as it stands, the law as it stands, is really problematic in terms of disproportionately criminalizing, criminalizing people of color. And yet from, as a school committee member, I have this concern for the health and safety of our children. Like if, if that could at least be there in writing, then I would feel more comfortable with sort of articulating that complex.
Could we propose...
But a resolution is just that. It's just a resolution. We don't have to have a, a resolution. It, it's, it just is, you know, basically a piece of paper that, you know, what you would be doing, no matter which way you come down to it, is this resolution is opposing question four. So you could tweak the language to reflect what you wanted to say, but when it's all said and done, the resolution is just that. You're just showing your support to oppose, you know, question four. And, and it might be, you know, everybody might have differences of opinion on that question. And, and, you know, that's why your, your vote is private when you go to the polls. So, but you can change the language in it, but it still becomes a resolution. And, and it's just that, like, they don't, it is not a legal document. It doesn't, you know, hold any type of legislative weight. It's just a supporting paper.
I understand.
I'm with Marissa on that one.
Could I, could I suggest?
I still want to put my name on it.
No.
Could I suggest then that perhaps a vehicle for advancing this would be to ask, it's, while it's not officially a policy...
You don't have to do it at all.
But I'm just thinking that that's the logical place to put it. Could the policy subcommittee take up adding language to the resolution or modifying the resolution and then re-presenting it at our meeting on the, at the 25th, correct?
Which is what I was trying to say. You can tweak it any way you want, and that is the resolution.
We might be better informed.
But you don't have to do one at all. We don't have to do a resolution at all.
I'm also kind of wondering about what you said, Peter, about spending more time on question two, which is like, oh, I feel like has a lot more to do with where our kind of experience and interest in this district are.
And I, and I missed that in the other section, because I got distracted, and I'm still distracted. I actually want to return to the meeting thing, because I think there's a better way forward on that. But I, I guess so, if, if, if it's the sense of, it's not my call here, I apologize.
That's okay.
The chair. But I, I would just suggest that we turn this over to the, to the, or an ad hoc group of any number of interested members of the school committee who might help draft language that would address, I mean, you know, schools aren't anything if they're not committed to social justice in, in the, in the best-informed sense. And I think we've heard tonight from at least two members who are well-informed and deeply concerned about that. And that's enough to give me pause on something that when I initially read this through, I thought, okay, is there a way that we could express this? And I think we might be able to come up with something. Because a resolution is not a binding policy. It's merely our, our statement. So I would propose that we do that.
And I think we all have common grounds that we agree on. You know, I think the, the concerns that we have are all, you know, are all pretty much the same. So if you want to tweak it to change some of the language, but you don't have to do a resolution at all.
Okay. So the question is, do we want to move forward and have an ad hoc group or whoever would like to be involved in rewording a resolution? Do we want to, do we want to do that and move forward in that direction? Or do we not want to adopt a resolution at all and leave it, leave it as is? I mean, just move on?
I think question four pairs on the, the health and well-being of children and their education in some form. You know, I think even the advocates of it would argue that it, it in theory is supposed to help, and we ought to look at that. It's not as clearly direct as...
Is there anybody that would be willing to be on the ad hoc to take up that issue?
I would be willing to. Definitely.
Since we have to have more than one person on the committee.
Sarah, are you interested?
I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking like, in, in my life right now, I'm having a lot of trouble with too many commitments. And so I'm, but I would really like to be a part of that. I've, but like, just with my health.
But I think whatever is presented, whatever is created, it could be brought forth to the committee at the next meeting for further discussion, deliberation, and then a vote as to whether or not we endorse the resolution.
And, and so that it reflects the, you know, the flavor of the entire committee?
And it would give everyone time to do more personal research.
Yes. Yeah, I would appreciate that.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay. So, um...
Ad hoc committee?
Pardon?
Who's on the...
Okay, so who would like to be involved in that process?
Marissa and Cindy, I think.
You can put me on there too, just, I'm going to see if I can work it out. I'm going to do my best.
All right, I'm going to do some research, so I'll try to contribute as well.
Yeah, I will too. So the whole committee.
So...
So immediately, we're going to look to schedule a meeting between now and October 25th to study this, discuss it further, and possibly come up with an amended resolution. Okay, so we'll plan to set that meeting up.
And then, and then with your permission, and I know the hour's running late, I just wanted to emphasize that I thought that we did see in the local press, in the discussion of question two, some, at least one argument that hadn't been made before, although perhaps, again, I've just missed it, because I hadn't been reading it. But I thought the taxation without representation piece of question number two, which I think we had sort of, we've all been talking about it without using that expression. And I'm quite sure that the proponent, I'm sure Mr. Cannon will have a thoughtful response, if I haven't already seen it to that. But there does seem to be a kind of line of logic that if public money is turned over to an institution that, where that money is primarily coming out of the local, and I know there's this, it goes to the state and then it comes back, but, you know, if it's a duck, right, I mean, if it quacks and it walks, it's a duck. The money is coming out of East Hampton and ends up being administered by an institution that is not under the authority of the citizens of East Hampton. So it's funded by the people of East Hampton, but it's not administered by the people of East Hampton. And I think that that's at least worth, for any voter who's interested in this question, worth considering, you know, that dimension of question two as well. I'm very clear. I still think that there's those of other reasons to be considering it and voting against it, as we have resolved. But I just wanted to highlight that. There may be other points that people have run across.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing new, but I, just to repeat the phrase again, you know, we keep hearing this phrase, the money follows the child, but the misleading, you know, I think the way to correct that is to say, the money follows the child, but the costs don't. That seems to be a simple way to remember that. We're still bearing a lot of the burden of cost as the money leaves.
It's, it's so overwhelmingly frustrating that there are any statements out there that say that it does not cost the district any money. $940,000 for East Hampton, it's a lot of money. So I don't understand, I know you can twist words to make them say sometimes a different meaning, but in this case, I really, I, I think it has, just has not been clear to people that are not involved in the system at all, that how much funds it does cost the district. So if it was just, and these, the commercials, the media are very misleading, very misleading. I mean, you know the, you know the evidence in watching them, they're, they're just hard to even watch them. I think it's very difficult to even watch them. So money following the child, that doesn't even, it doesn't even cut it, it doesn't even describe it. So when you're talking about four, you know, 4,000 coming in and 15,000 going out, what's following who? When you're talking about $940,000 off the city's budget at the very beginning of a year, how, how are you, can, how can, and that's your, our net loss. That's after what goes out and what comes in. How can you say that that doesn't cost us any money? And not only that, you know, these, these schools, as you know, as you know, the charter school in East Hampton has bought the building for approximately $3 million. That comes off our tax roll. So now that's not even taxable property. And then we have, you know, luckily, we've been working, thankful to Nancy, about the busing issue. So never, another 70,000. So there's no way, you cannot say that is costing us any money. I can't even imagine what we would do this year with, I would love to imagine what we would do with a, with nine, with an extra $900,000 for our public education.
Well, and let's put the challenge succinctly then, because I think Marissa's point about the cost following and the responses, but the costs go down because you're educating more students. We've had an open challenge since I recall Tom, Tom Brown sitting in, in, in your seat, Deb's, inviting one of the, the masters of the charter schools to come and show us how we save, save the money on the costs. And to this day, no one's shown up. So again, I say on public access television, show up and tell us how we can, we can make those adjustments in a way that doesn't harm the educational program of the students that remain in our care, who are disproportionately on any number of demographics. And nobody seems to, to answer that bell. And you can produce all the slick television advertising, and unfortunately, we're seeing far too much of it. And it's one of the reasons that I share Sarah's concern about advertising in general. You know, to try to deal with something complex in 30 seconds is ridiculous. But sincerely, we have a sincere problem. You as leaders of the charter school community are sincerely committed to the same problem. Come and show us. Come and show us how we can better administer the system in East Hampton so as to continue to provide the best education possible for the students who remain with us with a million dollars less in resources. Because the spread of where they are will make this, and maybe that's why you don't show up. Maybe that's, that's why we continue to have this deafening silence and inaction and refusal to sort of take up the, take up the challenge. And, and a reminder that ultimately, one of the arguments about charter schools was that they were going to infuse the educational system, that we're going to be incubators of educational innovation. Well, the educational innovation and the administration of schooling, it isn't, isn't evident to me. And that doesn't mean that I'm, that I'm stupid, I'm just ignorant. Come and, come and inform me. Show me how, as a school committee member, I could vote for or advise the superintendent and the director of business services to craft a better budget so that we could sustain the quality of services with a reduction in resources. I'll vote for that. Every taxpayer in this community would love it if we could say we could do the same thing at the same quality with a million dollars less. They, they, you know, we'd be on our way to, to higher office.
And I'm really concerned, my concerns are with the parents. Every parent wants to make the right choice for their child. So I'm really concerned with how they've mixed choicing and funding all in one package. I think they've, they've just made it so confusing that there are so many people that just do not understand the basics of this issue. And if they had just stuck to exactly that, exactly accountability and funding, and just stuck to that, people would really understand it, because it can be that, that detailed and that simple. But, you know, locking parents in there, into, in the middle of all this and making them feel that they, you know, shouldn't have a choice, have a choice, that's not what it's all about.
No, it's about, it's, it's about not increasing the, the cap on charter schools, which the, the state hasn't even reached their cap of how many charter schools they're allowed to have.
Of the ones that would be consistent with taxation.
Yes.
With representation.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right? So we want to lift the cap on institutions where there's taxation without representation, while we can't create schools. And there's, I think that's the proof of it. If you can't manage a charter school where you're accountable to a local school board, but you can manage a charter school when you're not, resolve that contradiction for me. What's the, what's the genie about, about that? That allows you, without public accountability, to do things that you can't apparently, no one's willing, not a sufficient number of people are willing to take up the charge to create the Horace Mann schools, correct? It's Horace Mann is the name of those schools.
Yes. Well, and the other thing is, is, you know, if you look at children with special needs, the charter schools are, there, there are very few ELL students, there are very few kids on IEPs at the charter schools. So public schools are doing a, what I think is an excellent job of servicing children with special needs with a shrinking amount of money. So I always sit there and think, what would we do? What could we do if we got that money back? If we weren't losing all that money, what kind of innovative programs that service all the kids in the community could we create? But, you know, I understand economic times are tough and budgets keep decreasing. I just, it's horrific that we are looking at having our budget decrease even more while we're not servicing all of the students. We talk about equity. You talk about social justice. It is crucial that we support public schools who service everybody.
I also think if you have a kid with a special need who is not able to be served in a charter school, and it has happened before many times where they've started at a charter school, and then they've kind of been pushed out because like, that's just not a good fit. It's, it's kind of like a, a real kick that the parents who are, if they're paying property taxes, are still paying for other kids to go to that charter school, but like, not for their own child to go there. You know, like, it just seems like so, like monumentally unfair, you know? Everybody agrees on this one.
Okay. So in conclusion, we hope you all, we read our, what's the word I'm looking for?
Resolution.
Resolution. Thank you. To vote no on question two. Okay. I think we should probably move on. Thank you all for your thoughtful comments. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is with regard to enrollment numbers.
And in your package, you had the, the October 1st numbers for this current school year, 2016, 2017. And then you were also supplied today with the numbers for last school year, 15, 16. And I'm happy to announce that we have had an increase in enrollment, which is, is not typical of the students here in, or of the school districts in Western Massachusetts. And we actually will have more numbers added to this school year's student enrollment. As Dale was mentioning to you earlier, we are going to have to open a... we are going to have to open a, we are opening a new preschool. And we will have approximately, according to our Director of Special Education, fifteen special education students in that new preschool, and up to sixteen peer partners. So, we're going to be adding more students to our student.
Oh, so it's the side-by-side class?
Combined class.
That's cool.
And, and our preschool students now are eligible for Chapter 70 funding, so, in our count for Chapter 70 funding, so, that's an advantage. Any questions on, on any of the data here?
Just remind me again, I forgot what ECP stands for, I know it's a small number.
Early Childhood Program.
Early Childhood Program, okay.
I think it goes to like, you know, as a reflection of how East Hampton is growing as a city. And families are coming in and
And I think it also is a reflection, Casey, on the outreach that our young families have done, the kindergarten outreach that you all did.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the programs that we have that we're inviting families to. And we continue to try to find ways to reach out to our young families in East Hampton and show them who we are and what we offer our students.
And they're increasingly becoming aware, East Hampton Public Schools are a great place to learn and grow.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great community, and they're great schools, and so I think it goes.
Word is catching on.
And just taking the long-term view, we've often looked at some of these pinch points before. The transition numbers as opposed to previous years, when you look at, say, fourth in year one to fifth in year two, that there's, there's positive movement there. There's also, you know, when you see that there were a hundred and seven, I'm sorry, you see that there were a hundred and twenty-one students in first grade a year last fall, and that there's a hundred and thirty this fall, that means that either people returned, or people moved into the town and chose, right? So, what we need to look at is say, okay, so there's a success, and then we need to look at the numbers where there's a challenge. But those numbers are nowhere near as significant as they were when I first joined the school committee in 2007. So, I think that it's a credit to a number of things, the quality of the program, the changing demographic in the community, and the understanding about the two.
And we have increased our choice numbers in as well, so I think that's reflected here.
So, there's work to be done, but there's also places to look and say, okay, clearly this is working. This is appealing. How do we, we have to, you know, setting aside, worst-case scenario, this cap thing goes, gets lifted, how do we play this game? We play this game by looking at our successes and build on them.
And I think the more that we involve our community in the, the information on the new school building project that we're considering and have them participate with us in it, I think that that'll also be another way to help support this positive movement.
Yeah, I appreciate your updates too. I think it's, it's really supportive to the community, your, your building updates, and also your updates with the district as well.
You know, and it's funny, Nancy, too, because what has come through in any of our workshops, at any of our work sessions for the School Building Authority, is fair and equitable. School training, education for everybody, no matter what, what, where they're at, what building they're at, you know, trying to maintain that level for everyone on the same playing field. So, that has come through at every single one of our meetings, you know, for planning for the future. And, and based on some of the challenges we have and the different buildings that we have.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to warrants and payroll. So, if we have payroll of none?
Is it in a capting adjustment sometimes?
Is there two pink sheets?
Yes.
There may just be two accounts payroll warrants and only one payroll since the last technical.
Yeah, that's what it is, just accounts.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 6, 2016 in the amount of four thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Yeah, sorry.
Second, sorry.
I'm sorry, the number, four thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion that's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 6, 2016 in the amount of four thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and thirty cents. All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you.
I move to approve the school payroll dated October 13, 2016 in the amount of four hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second.
There's a motion that's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated October 13, 2016 in the amount of four hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Finally, I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 13, 2016 in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred three dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
There's a motion that's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 13, 2016 in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred and three dollars and eighty cents. All those in favor? Motion passes. Is that everything?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we need to
A motion on the minutes?
Have a motion for a minutes.
Motion that we approve the minutes from the September 27 meeting?
Second. Second. Okay, there's been a motion to approve the minutes from September 27, 2016 meeting, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I know that we're anxious to go, I just want to go back, I've been, I've been sitting here racking my brain partly because of the mayor's question, trying to figure out the timing of meetings. Was it, was it the sense of the committee that a six o'clock meeting would work for everyone?
But not you.
We were keeping it at six.
Right, because what, I mean, part of what, the way I figured out how to be here tonight later, I'm wondering if I can't work that back. So, I would, I would propose that, that if that works for everybody, that I, that I'll just figure out a way to address it, if that works. If, you know, the mayor explained some benefits, if those benefits work for other people. I know we have parents of young children and other folks on the committee, and there's maybe a whole bunch of reasons why that's a good idea. We don't have to decide it tonight, I just wanted to say it while we're still sort of on record. We can talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay. So, we'll, in conclusion, leave things as they stand currently. We will continue in our 6:30 timeframe, and we can discuss this again at another meeting.
Okay.
But that's okay.
And this is probably a terrible time to bring this up, but isn't the next meeting ragshag night?
Or is it shoot?
So, I really hate interfering with meetings and, oh, well then.
I'm turning thirty.
Meeting adjourned.
So, what's the schedule for ragshag again? They're sort of out at like five thirty to?
And six, and they line up at Maple School, and they now go behind East Hampton Savings, because that's so much, you know, safer instead of
Can we have our meeting after?
Previously when that happened, we've rescheduled our meeting to not be that night. So, maybe we should do that.
Then again, I hate bringing it up, I know it's
I missed that. I saw the election night meeting and thought, I know I'm gonna want to be somewhere else that night, but
Unless, and course watch, we'll switch our meeting into the rain, because there is a rain date.
Well, let's not switch it to that date then. Sue, would you be willing to coordinate some email communication for us to see about a date that would work for everyone for rescheduling the October 25th meeting? Okay, so we can do that?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have one other question.
Oh, I told you.
Sue, before we adjourn, we have a question about whether our finance subcommittee meeting minutes need to be approved by the committee, or no? The full committee?
They're submitted, subcommittee minutes are just submitted to the school committee.
Okay, they're very good. Okay, then we're ready to entertain the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?